Oh, okay. I was wondering if I don't remember that.
We got one minute? Scott, did you Simmons in my?
Hey, good morning. I was gonna one more time. Everybody's cell phone? Yes. Please make sure your cell phone's on. Be a lot of people like, well, want to keep their activity. Uh, everybody get a copy of the agenda? What do you might like to talk? There again, we're done school. That's Mac. Let's take one of your children with. Anybody else? All right. We're gonna have a house. Hey, lock it in the morning. You're gonna run. And he's worked on that. He's here for her before and that same.
All right, it is nine o'clock. Could you please rise? I've asked Mike Calhoun with Fruit Baptist Church in Van, Texas, to open us in prayer this morning.
That's right, please. Father God in heaven, thank you so much for this gorgeous morning to have you in us, dear Lord. Father, we thank you for this esteemed panel of elected officials, dear Lord, and we ask you to bless them out here, God. Father, I do ask you to help us to remember this is something, dear Lord, uh, that has been provided by you for, uh, leadership in the land. And God, we pray for good leadership. We pray that your hand would be upon these, uh, men and women who lead our county and our state. And Father, we thank you that, uh, this principle is taking place all over the land, dear Lord, in these United States. Father, we ask you that your Holy Spirit would fill this place. Each and each man and woman, dear Lord, would recognize your presence here, dear Lord. We pray for wisdom. We pray for discernment. And Father, we pray for your will to be done. Protect this great nation, dear Lord. Continue to bless us. I don't know why you blessed, and I don't know why you love us like we do, but we're thankful that you do, dear Lord. We thank you for your dear son, Jesus, and we ask you to bless these proceedings, dear Lord. Is in Jesus' precious and holy and wonderful name we pray, and all of God's people said.
Thank you. Pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the God of the Constitution. Why, I'm actually, I wonder, God, you have this poem with the lyrics, he has died of this fraud. Pledge the flag. I pledge a flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. One state, one God, one humanity. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, I call this meeting order at nine oh two AM and announce that we have a forum. All the commissioners and county judge are present. Next, we would like to, uh, general announcements. I believe we have two. We have presentation of years, um, recognition of years of service award. Go ahead.
Hey, you wanted to get an opportunity to recognize what our toys work. Deadlock here. He, uh, not super about the work. That's not, no sir. We just power this for me. It'd be even people think being here easily for five years charge for the center of jail. I had nothing compliments to say about the work he does back here. He, uh, professional, does a great job for us. We experienced a turnover back there and slowed some of that down. Constant trains were done the time he's been here. He does that same job for us. And I can't say anything to thank him. I think they're fun, like about four or five more of one of these days. But we're often one police academy for, so we're still working getting there. Anyone want to congratulate the fact of your service? There's ten to two. Right. In our whole car. Here, one, two, three, the student. One more.
All right, we have another one. You're up.
Good morning, everybody. I am coming over on behalf of the extension office. I just want to show you some of the fun things that we've got, uh, plans. It's educational, but I, this is your, uh, invite. My name is Amy Shively, and I'm with the extension office. I am the family community health agent. And so I wanted to share with you, we have a girlfriend's, uh, lunch and learn that will start in September. And so everybody's invited. You have to RSVP, but it's at no cost to you. So if you need some grill tips and tricks and recipes, please come and see us, okay? So we've got this going on all the month of September. Then we have, uh, Wild About 4H. We're making a big plug for our 4H, uh, uh, program. And so if you have know of any youngsters that want to be involved in 4H, please have them come to this meeting. We'll get them plugged into a club here in our, in our county. Our numbers are increasing, and that's really exciting for us to see our, uh, clubs grow. We also appear into cooking. We have a cannon class that's gonna be coming up in October. And so, uh, if you're wanting to, if you don't want to get in the jam, um, come see me. And so I will teach you how to, uh, jam it up. So we're gonna be having cannon classes. We're also, this is something that's really important, uh, especially here in our county. We are offering food handlers and food management protection, uh, classes at our office. And so you can take your, uh, tests and everything there. It is a fee, but we're gonna be offering this at our office. And so I wanted to let you guys know, good, good handlers and food, food protection. We're also offering this to the school. And so if you know the school that needs us to go in and certify, um, people, we can do this. Um, also, we have coming up at the library holiday. Good luck. So if you're already thinking and getting in the holiday spirit, uh, we're gonna be having, um, classes at the, uh, at the library focusing on diet and nutrition. How to stretch your dollars, especially during the holiday season. And so we've got a series that will be going on at the, uh, at the library here. And then last thing, who doesn't want to do this? We've got coffee conversation and crafts. And so we're gonna talk about stress less with mindfulness, because everybody during the holiday season seems to be going mothballed, hair on fire. And so this is gonna be a chance to kind of slow down, kind of talk about how to, uh, do some gifts that are gonna be homemade and, uh, give you some ideas and, uh, some tricks. So I want to invite all of you. We've got a lot going on. Please check our Facebook and, and, um, our extension page. And give us a call if you're interested. We can get you signed up. Yes, ma'am.
When agents for 4H?
4H. It's, it's third grade and up where they can be clover kids.
To how old?
Eighteen. Alrighty. Okay, when they graduate. I saw. Alrighty. Any other question? All right. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners, and you're all welcome to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other general comments? All right, and we'll move on to public comments. And, uh, each member of the public appears for the commission court shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes to make his or remarks. Time for each speaker shall be made by the county clerk. Uh, the maximum discussion time on any agenda item regardless of the number of members of the public wishing to address commissioners court shall be limited to thirty minutes. I have eight people that have signed up. It's everybody that has, uh, signed up that wishes to speak. So that will make it for three and a half minutes, uh, for each person. And, uh, we'll talk in that regard. So the first person, I'm going in the order in which the application or the, uh, participation form was received will be Mr. David Donegan.
Judge, commissioners, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, David Donegan in precinct two. And just to let you a little bit know about my qualifications, I began programming computers in nineteen seventy seven. Now I have over forty years experience in the design, implementation, and maintenance of information technology. So our discussion today about voting systems, what you, what you're using right now, or what you're, what you're proposing to go to. All of them, I can tell you, whether the platforms they're built on are hackable. And by hackable, I mean the data, voting information, whether it came from paper ballots or tablets or whatever. Once it makes it to some of these platforms, it can be manipulated. It can be changed. So my concern today is going from one voting system to another mandated or not. From a technology perspective, you're basically going from the frying pan to the fire. So, uh, in the meeting last week, Judge Reese referenced part C one of the election code about validating voting system source code. That's basically proof, proving that the system court source code for the systems has not been manipulated or been changed. And, and that's a, that's a pretty noble thing as far as, uh, voting integrity is concerned. But quite honestly, what we've seen, especially since the twenty twenty elections, is that the source code and it being valid is just one little piece of the whole integrity of the system. We saw human problems, uh, that would affect integrity with the ballots, paper ballots, stuffing, manipulated, incorrect, whatever. But then you also have the situation of, uh, inside and outside people being able to, uh, access this, hack the systems and be able to access the data itself, the voting data, the data that people cast their votes on, the database themselves. Whether it be somebody inside accessing that or somebody remotely accessing, accessing that data. And whether that data is what we call at rest stored on the system or if it's in transit, being transferred from one place to another. My concern is that anything you go forward to use is going to have the same potential problems as even what you have right now. Everybody's concerned about, uh, our voting equipment certification, uh, because of the same law that was changed in twenty twenty one, your, uh, the election laws have changed. But the concern is we just see one law and some other laws were all changed back in twenty twenty one. And we've had several elections since then without a problem. But suddenly now it's an urgent issue that we've got to stop, get rid of the system and get another one. Now, uh, I think everybody got a copy of the letter between the secretary's day. And when I read through it, you're right, the law that changed in twenty twenty one about the voting equipment can be used, that wouldn't affect back in twenty twenty one. We've had a whole set of elections since then with this law in effect. But all of a sudden, we're sitting here going, we have to, we must, right now, we have to change systems. This letter just says that they recommend you begin the process. And it doesn't say, and it said they are considering decertification of the system using account. They're not saying they'd be certified. They're sitting there considering, and they're saying you need to start the process. I agree, the process needs to be started. But we're fifty-five days from an election. And it concerns me this is being framed up.
All right, next is Eddie Booth. Or E.B. Booth, I'm sorry.
I'll try to be short. Well, I am short, always have. Uh, brief, brief's a better word. I work the elections. I'm, um, uh, alternate judge in two A. And so I'm pretty aware of how the process goes. Uh, we use paper ballots in Texas. We will continue using paper ballots in Texas. It's required that we use paper ballots. They can always be recounted. One of, one of the speakers last time was concerned about the barcode on the heart, um, ballots. And that barcode appears on current ballots. And I believe that barcode tells the machine that it can read the ballot whether it's upside down, backwards, whatever. It tells the, the machine how to read it. And Susan, of course, would be able to instruct us better on that. But, um, that barcode shows me that we have a valid ballot. Just as you were elected to represent your constituents, Susan Spixelin was elected to her position as county clerk. We elect you guys for a specific job. Susan was elected for a specific job. When she was first elected, Susan hit the ground running and learned how to do the process and how to have a, uh, an election of integrity. When Judge Reese was elected, he probably studied his position and responsibilities, the functioning of county government more than any judge we've had in the past. These people are efficient, savvy, and competent. Susan, uh, is the one who administers the elections. She is the one who knows whether we need machines or not. That's the job that she was elected for in the county government. I have been at elections where the machines quit, where they had to be replaced, where they malfunctioned, where somebody had to be called. It's constant. They're outdated. We need to change. We support you in that. A majority of people in this county support you in that. We have a very vocal minority who is fighting change and progress. And I don't think that it's in our best interest to do that. The heart machines require paper ballots. The heart machines can be hash checked on that source code. Uh, we've got to be plugged into the internet if somebody's gonna mess with things. And if anybody thought the election was messed with, we've got paper ballots that we can count, can count, or however we want to do it. The, uh, people can file to do that, and it, it works. Susan was elected to do a job. Each of you was elected to do yours. Don't allow the squeaky wheel to run the micromanage, the business of the county. We all were elected to do it. Trust yourself. Do what's right. Tell us about the payments and terms. If we're going to do payments on the machines, tell us about whether we're going to be outright buying it. That's what we want to know. Thank you.
All right, number, uh, third speaker, we Ann Nelson.
Morning, everyone. I'm, um, Ann Nelson. I'm with the Van Zand County Democrats. I'm in precinct two, but do live in the county. Um, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate what I said last week, which hasn't changed. Uh, the Van Zand County Democrats support replacing the aging equipment. We've worked on the elections. We've kind of kept our fingers crossed for twelve hours a day, hoping those machines hang in there. So we do support going forward with new equipment. And also to thank you for having the meeting last week so we could discuss it this week, so we could discuss it more. And that we, uh, appreciate having you all up here. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Next is Dwayne Collins. And following Dwayne will be Ed Wilkinson, Karen Reeves, Lance Lance.
Thank you, commissioners court, for hearing all of us. Uh, my name is Dwayne Collins. I'm from precinct four. Uh, I just, uh, had some comments to make. Uh, I think David Donegan summed up, uh, my thoughts on the process. Uh, what concerns me, and it looks like we are gonna move forward with these machines. I understand that the state, uh, approved them. Uh, but, uh, my concern is the process in deciding when we were gonna do this and how we were gonna do this, because it seems to me that there is a lack of transparency between the voters and the commissioners court. We were promised that we were gonna have a hand count, that we were gonna look at these machines if we had time to do this. Uh, our, our present machines, uh, we know that they can be repaired. There is an individual that came here, an expert, that said that these machines could be repaired, uh, and, and would suffice, uh, for a while longer. We heard from our senator Bob Hall, who has conducted hearings in our capital on voting machines. I've had experts there. And you have his letter and, and his recommendation on, on let's back off, and let's examine this a little further. Uh, you've heard from, uh, our, uh, Republican, uh, county chair runs the, uh, elections and precinct chairs. I went to their meeting and all of them were in concurrence that we could wait a little, we could still work with what we got until we could make sure that what we purchased is gonna do us the right job. I'm not against going forward with new equipment if we all in, are in concurrence with that, and this, this equipment is not gonna go obsolete the moment we buy. Red flag is effective one million dollars for the purchase of these machines to half a million bucks. What, what, what's up with that? That's red flag saying this equipment, these kind of, this company are, uh, hard. Uh, it is possibly trying to give us some equipment that, that's gonna go out of there. So, uh, that's my thoughts. Uh, the other, the other thought is, uh, and, and concern is how are we gonna purchase this setup? Number one, we don't need to go back in depth. The previous, uh, commissioners court and judge fought very hard to get this county where it is now. And I'm so proud of this county. When I go to meetings across the state and I talk to other counties, and I tell them, Van Zand County is out of there. They can't believe it. I know we were pinched for money, but I think we can still work with what we have and, and address the needs of the people. So the, the purchase of this, uh, these machines, uh, I hope it doesn't put us in a bind. Uh, I think that we can, uh, address some of our other needs, especially law enforcement with some of this money. And there's a lot of people in here ready to do some hand count, whatever it takes to make this county right. So thank you for listening to me and, uh, I'm praying and hoping that you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you for listening to me again. I'm gonna probably finish what I started last week. Uh, first off, Van Zand County has the finest voting process in Texas. I know we have flaws with some of it, but using a simple printed paper ballot and serialized is probably the safest, the most economical way to go. There's no way a voter cannot vote once checked in. Once marked, it's optically read, it counted. The voter's ID is not associated with this process, so a true secret ballot still exists. Since the commissioners first talked about this new electronic voting machines, there's been much scrutiny about how safe these machines are. The civic center demo showed even more questions had to be answered. Failing to allow the county to have this requested form, Judge Reese and commissioners, you have failed in your responsibility, rush responsibility to the Van Zand County voters. Now that we're going through this again, here's my point. These machines will be compromising our future votes. There are no guarantees with this new system, period. At the demo, I received a ballot receipt. On that receipt was a barcode. The barcode's been mentioned a number of times. My name and ID and information from what kind of ballot presented to me was printed. With this barcode, my ballot is no longer secret. This machine can now tie my vote to my name. As long as the machine is doing the entire process, paper ballots are no longer isolated from the process as we have done in past elections. This information can be data mined later. My caution to the commissioners and Judge Reese, you're changing the voting for the county. We will no longer have a secret ballot in a secure voting system. Not only will this change, but now you're opening up Pandora's box for voter fraud. Electronic voting has always had issues as long as it can be accessed through wifi or specific code. There's no secure voting in this county if you vote for this. Commissioners, I urge you not to approve payments for these machines. We do not need to change the secure voting in our system that we have now. Only update central counting machine to speed up the counting process. Again, please don't change our secure voting. Ed Wilkinson, voter back then, four D.
Thank you, Ed. All right, next is Karen Reeves.
Karen Reeves, precinct four. Little bit about me. I've been a records management officer and trainer for a long time. I manage records. Been doing it for a corporation in over ninety different countries in the world. I have been to places that have showed the cybersecurity issues that can come up with machines. I have watched them flip with two different Microsoft apps on the cell phone standing outside the building. And it went boop, 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 and the votes flipped. The machines were not connected to the internet. The people were standing outside. Okay? Transparency is huge. Different people here are voted in to be conservative representatives of the people. You were voted in to be my conservative representative of the people. Last week, fourteen people spoke. Twelve of them spoke against getting these machines. Last week, fourteen people spoke. Twelve of them spoke against getting these machines. Those of you that voted for the machines voted against the people. That will be remembered. Trust me, it will be remembered. Okay? Confusion was caused by the fact that there was this push, push, push. You gotta do it because we can't vote in November, otherwise. What wasn't told to everyone, wasn't discussed, is the machines that have this source code issue and are not certifiable are the handicap machines. Because the scanners don't have that. We pay, we vote on paper. It's the most secure way to do it. They just don't count on paper. And without according to Ms. Strickland here, they only count three different races just to make sure everything's coming up good. And she told me the week prior to last week's meeting that everything worked wonderful. She didn't tell me about last week's meeting, but she told me that I didn't ask. So now I'm here, and now we're past that. But the whole vote last week was miss- it was a misconception presented that we had to vote for these machines. We could not vote in November because it was stated that you just absolutely can't do it. But that's not true. We could vote with paper. And we can vote with paper and you can use the scanners. Because people, the machines that can't be used are the ones with the handicap. And you know what? That's what curbside voting is for. You walk outside, and I don't know how many times, even my mother, who's ninety-five, curbside voting. They walk outside and they take her vote. So that issue is gone. So this immediate rush to have to spend all this money on these machines, and there wasn't a workshop that was promised. There's people in this room fixing to make a lot of money off of this. Okay? And I'm letting you know, all those that vote for it, those machines, I've seen these machines flip. I've seen these machines hackable. You guys are responsible for it. You're responsible to the people. The people voted against it. There were enough of us telling you, if you did a tally of everyone in this county, you would find against it. We will remember.
All right. Uh, thank you, Ca- uh, Karen. Now it's Lance Lance, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm the Republican County Chairman Lance Lance. I'm the Commissioner of Precinct One, the proper reason for. So I have invested, very invested interest in the county. My concern is on the payment method. I am deeply concerned. We spent about twelve years to move out of debt. We were on the precipice of almost filing bankruptcy as a county, to be the first county in Texas to file bankruptcy. You guys worked incredibly hard, some of the Commissioners around here now, to move us out of that position and make us debt-free. This budget item was put in over a year ago, when it was still looking at a debt-free county. I don't see why it can't be paid from what we had before, now that the monies are lower. I do not see a reason that this county needs to move back into debt. I don't think we need to move down that diabolical path, where in a couple of years, we'll be asking again loans to pay our employees. It's just not something that the Republican Party wants to see, and most of the voters in Van Zandt County don't wanna see, is the county back in debt. We're trusting you guys to keep us out of debt. Right now, if it went from about a million dollars to half a million dollars in Susan's original budget, that money should already be there. Shouldn't even be an item on the, the Commissioners Court right now to even discuss a loan to pay for the voting equipment, because it was already actually approved. Now I'm just, I'm really surprised Commissioners are looking at financing, moving us back into debt. Taking us back to a place where we really don't wanna be. And again, I'd rather see the money being used on the Sheriff's Department or pay for county employees. Not paying interest to a bank that benefits not at all in this county. So, gentlemen, please do not move us back into debt. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Faith Carmen.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Faith Carmen. I'm in precinct four. I'll start off with, I don't want the teams. I agree with the ones that are opposing it, the hackability and such. But researching some information on their budget hearings, the budgets, um, policies and procedures of the courts. Last year, when the current budget of twenty twenty-three was presented and approved by the commis- uh, County Judge Per Patrick, the Commissioner LaPrada, Commissioner Melton, Commissioner Pearson, and Commissioner West, last year on September fourteenth, it was approved. My understanding, when reviewing information, the workshop on six twenty-eight over county clerk's budget, doesn't matter what we say. They gave her permission when they put that money on the budget. And they cannot approve it. You can go back and listen to the whole workshop. They discuss it. They explain it on six twenty-eight at one hour and fifty minutes. Begins the discussion about payment of machines. At that point, Susan said I could order an A. The discussion was that when it was put approved in the budget, she was given permission to order missions that they could not. Now I still oppose the machines. I'm concerned about the printers. It's a moot point. They gave her permission back on September fourteenth of twenty twenty-two. My concern is, like Mr. Lynn said, payment of it. If it was a budgeted item, do we not have the money and why would we finance it? I agree with him, financing puts us back in debt. If it was a budgeted item and we have it, we need to pay it. I also have concern if, but it was stated and confirmed that there's no policy, the court, that once that budgeted item is in per or any budget that another elected official can tell them how to spend that money. I listened to it correctly, heard it. Um, but that was my understanding from that. So as far as that, actually, now to deny or not pay, it's not within our right. They gave her that permission back in September of twenty twenty-two. I also have a concern. I don't wanna see financing. If it's budgeted and we have it budgeted in there, we need to pay for it. But I also have the concern that it's in the current proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, that a reduction of nine hundred thou- from one million four hundred. Originally in twenty twenty-three, she had one million forty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars budgeted. So when she spent, uh, the machines cost five hundred and thirty-five thousand and some odd change, she still has five hundred and seven thousand that she could spend between now and the end of the month, budgeted for voting. So I believe if that's not spent, that goes back into the general fund, cannot be carried over. But you have proposed a nine hundred thousand dollar budget item for the machines. So moving forward, y'all are gonna decide how to pay for it. Debt is not good. It was budgeted, but we need the nine hundred thousand removed from the twenty twenty-four budget.
All right. Thank you very much for those comments. And uh, so I would uh, like to address some things that have been uh, said that may be misinformation or misrepresented in, in a certain extent. The county is required to comply with the Secretary of State elections decision on the, the equipment that we use. They mandate what we use. There's only two systems that are approved uh, for this state that I'm aware of. One is from Hart, one is from E S Ness. All two hundred and fifty-four counties have such machines. Okay? Anything related to security in the machines has to come from the Secretary of State. It's not something that we can do, because we can only use machines certified by the state in that regard. So the reason you ask, why is this all of a sudden, as you see uh, my, my face testimony, we've been working on this process for over a year. It's not something that we just started. It's something we've been working on for a year. And uh, we got notified mid-August from the Secretary of State that some of our equipment was uh, out of compliance. I didn't say it was not certified. I said it was out of compliance. And that's what they told us by phone. We had our meeting last Wednesday. We received the letter. They, the Secretary of State was still in the process of drafting the letter to go out to everyone. We received the letter on Thursday or Friday, or an email copy of it Thursday, and we received the actual physical letter on Friday. And you should have a copy. There's some out there. But basically, I'm gonna go with a paragraph that says, I'm not gonna go into the details about what the hash validation sit in the new legislation, but it says, "We recommend that you begin the process of acquiring a new voting system as soon as possible." "Our office is considering the decertification of several legacy systems that do not satisfy the legal requirements relating to hash validation." "If the system you are currently using is decertified, you will be unable to use that system for any elections occurring after the date of decertification." We have no, no idea of knowing when that could occur. So it is in our best, that is what moved the process of purchasing or looking at evaluating and purchasing the system now rather than after November election. Okay? And a- as far as the budget goes, uh, you saw, we started this back last year and we knew it was uh, in the, in the uh, in the works for well over a year. And the other, the comment about it's only part of our equipment that is uh, not certifiable or that is, excuse me, that is out of compliance, that is true. Uh, it is the auto marks. The auto marks are the machines, and every election judge knows what an auto mark is because you go into the polling place on election day and you turn it on and you go i- at the end of the day, you turn it off, and that's the extent of what they get used for in most of our elections. Uh, very rarely, I, I can't give you the exact number, but I would say under twenty people actually use the auto marks. They're designed for people with vision or hearing impairments because they have special audio jacks, they have special vision things. That is what the, they're mandated, that the, the state mandates that we have these devices in every polling location. They are not, uh, they are the ones that are uh, considered out of compliance. Yes. It, it's feasible. It is feasible that we just go in and replace the auto marks. But now you're getting into the situation where you have to, uh, you have two sets of equipment and eventually you may be getting new uh, balloting equipment and you have to make sure that your other, it's, it's not necessary to do that when we are in the process of looking at new equipment and can do everything at one time and make sure it's uniform and flows uh, well through, through the voting process. Uh, it is our intention a- as a court that uh, that election integrity is maintained. And we are maintaining it using equipment that the Secretary of State has certified and has said is okay for us to use. And that is uh, and the other part of election integrity has to do with the people involved in the voting process. So the people, including our election judges, our county clerk, her staff, all of that has to flow properly to make sure that the votes are counted properly and uh, the votes are done properly and counted properly. So and I, I have uh, high confidence in uh, Susan and the county clerk's office and the current election judges that we have that will make it happen. So that is, that is my addressing of, of the uh, comments. And now we can move on to the agenda item, which is consent agenda is the first item, number four. This is consent agenda items are considered routine by the Commissioners Court and uh, will be enacted by one motion unless uh, a separate discussion of these items, unless the county judge or Commissioners Court request to pull an item and discuss it separately. So there's five individual items under consent agenda. Is there, or six actually, uh, seven, all for G. So uh, is there any items that need to be pulled that a Commissioner would like to discuss separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? Show me. All right, motion by me, by uh, Virgil. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Barton. All those in favor, second five. All of opposed, like sign, motion passed. Item number five, discuss and consider the master agreement with Hart Interactive for new voting equipment to be used by Van Zandt County and determine how the county will fund and purchase. Uh, what we approved last week was the price quote. That was the quote from Hart that said, this is what the equipment will cost. Uh, what we now, and using that, once that was approved, they moved forward with some, with compiling a completed contract that has all the terms and conditions of the equipment and what, what we can and can't do with that. So uh, is there uh, uh, and what we need to, well, there's two things that we need to do. One is approve the contract, two is determine how we want to pay for the equipment. We have three options. Option number one is to pay it through our current fund balance, pay cash for it. Option number two is to consider using money from the ARPA funds, which uh, were, were granted to us two years ago, and we tend to have a balance in there. Uh, and item number three would be to finance it. We have a, uh, we have capital uh, available to us uh, at a rate of five percent. And we are currently earning uh, on the investments that we have five percent. So it basically financing would be a wash. So uh, I would, you know, uh, is there a discussion? I believe it's a will to, will, uh, I believe it is our will to pay cash since we have the cash available to us in that regard.
I, I'll start off with, uh, well, once again, there's many, many times, and with all respect to you, Judge, there's many, many times that you say we, and you shouldn't say I. Um, because there's lots, lots of things that haven't been discussed with me. I want the people to know, please do not confuse my passion with anger. Nothing about this has made me angry. Uh, I'm not against uh, the voting equipment. I, I understand that our equipment that we have is outdated. We need to do something about it. And I think we should. It's been my understanding, since I've been on, working in this job for y'all for over six years, that big ticket items, yes, we budget them all the time. And then the, the elected officials or department heads come back to us and say, here's what I'd like to do and tell, and tell us what the deal is. And then this court agrees with them or doesn't agree with them. And so that's what the deal, I'm sorry what you draw the uh, face, but that is not what I said a year ago. I said, yes, we'll budget for it. We, we, we put it in there where we could finance it or not finance it. That was due to the ARPA funds were not settled at that time. We didn't know if we could use those funds or, or financing something like this. As it came out, we can use ARPA funds, but we didn't know that at that time. So it was my understanding that Ms. Strickland was said, yes, we're gonna budget for it, bring us some information. She's right back here today, bringing this information. So I want y'all to know, it's not that I'm against voting machines or the process of getting the voting machines. I'm voting against the, the process of how this has all been done. Of not all the Commissioners knowing what's going on, and the people know what's going on. And so please don't confuse passion with anger. I'm not mad at anybody. I'm not mad at the judge. I'm not mad at Susan. I'm very disappointed in how this went on, because we didn't have discussion that we should have had. So I'm voting no for anything other than financing. I do not, I do agree with you there, Judge. I don't think we ought to finance it. Uh, but uh, in, any other thing, I'll be voting no for on the process, because I've got to take a stand. Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All I can really say is, is dead overkeep. That's how I feel. The, the, give a whole speech such as good to me just to take your time up. He pretty well said exactly how I feel in the situation. I'd put you, you better.
All right.
I'd like to say from, this is twenty twenty-three. And I, I wrote some notes down on what people said, but last year, there was a million dollars, around a million. And I, I wrote some notes down on what people said, but last year, there was a million dollars, around a million dollars given to Susan's budget for voting machines. So it's basically saying, if she wanted to, she could go buy the machines right when the million dollars came, if she, if she wanted to. But she did come to the court and says, hey, we have another option to pay for this. How do, how do we want to do it? So we, we were gonna look at it. But we could have bought the machines. She could have bought the machines if she wanted to. So it was basically already approved last year that the machines were gonna be, be bought. And we failed as a court last week by not sticking to the agenda on how to do that. But with the public comments, everything is hackable nowadays. It doesn't matter, I mean, you see banks, you see the government, corporates, everything is hackable. We cannot prevent that. But the companies that produce these equipment do everything they can in their software to prevent it. And I know Susan has done her homework on when the heart in the E S S, and she went with the heart. And I think we have to trust her that this is what's best. And uh, the, the equipment is not in compliance, as already said, and we have to move forward. We have to get these, we have to move forward and, and get with the times. And then there was a, a lady, twelve people were here yes, uh, last week that did not vote for the machine, or they wanted to vote against the machines. Out of those twelve people, eight of them brought up two million dollars on the, on the uh, flyer. And that's one hundred percent false. So I think the people and the court needs to do a better job at communicating because there's so much misinformation that y'all are not, y'all not talking, no, y'all not speaking the truth to the county. Uh, and I think we need to do a better job of that. Uh, and it was never reduced to five hundred thousand. We just gave Karen a million dollars as a, as a sum. And she looked at those voting machines and it came up at five hundred and thirty-five thousand. The price was never reduced from a million to five hundred and thirty-five. We just gave her a million dollars and then the price came up at five thirty-five. Uh, and Lance on your, I, I agree, we shouldn't get a loan, but I do think as a court that we should look at all options to pay. Cause sometimes it is, you, it is good to use the government's money. Not in this case, but it was an option and I think we did have to look at it as long as it was on there. But uh, I think we all need to do better, the court and the people at communicating and getting the facts and the truth. If we disagree on facts or we disagree on the truth, that's fine. But we can't not, it's just, your, your people are saying this and it's really this and all we're doing, all we're doing is dividing each other, not uniting each other. If we have the truth and we disagree, that's fine. And that's what, you know, in my six months from now that I've been in, that's what I've seen is that, if you want to argue something, make sure we know the facts. And that's all I have.
Uh, I don't think uh, uh, that with what we have proposed to spend out of the ARPA fund that we have enough money left in our fund to pay for the machines. So I think that option may be out and I certainly don't want to finance the machines. I think our best option is to, to pay for the machines out of the money we have budgeted for.
And then, uh, I'm gonna, go ahead. All right, um, I believe that we did our best to include everybody up here in the public when we did the public demo on June twenty-second at Civic Center. Where everybody got to show up, got to go in and vote on both pieces of equipment and see the process and how it does. And from that standpoint, our county clerk also was uh, able to interact with them and ask in technical questions answered and uh, is I, I believe it is her decision to decide which system to purchase because she's the one that's gonna have to operate. She's the one that has to run the elections and would know which one has the best features to meet our needs. And that is why, uh, and, and she selected the hard system. I don't know, as far as uh, timely, the, the reason, not only because of what the Secretary of State has told us about the equipment, but the timeliness of it is that if we get the equipment now, we have the opportunity to train, to learn and to test, or not test it prior to the November election, which was a constitutional, uh, constitutional amendments and this House District Two's uh, representative rights. So it's not a big election, there's not a lot of, as many voters going to uh, show up. So we will be able to anticipate or able to find out what kind of issues we'll have with the new equipment and address those in a much lower volume, preparing us for the March fifth primary. And the March fifth primary, well, on a presidential uh, election year in November, we will have twenty, over twenty to twenty-five thousand people vote, again, depending on the voter turnout. That's significantly more than will be in November. So we will get to cut our teeth, you might say, on a new equipment in November and be ready to do a good job uh, in October, in uh, March of next year. So that is, that is the reason, that is part of the reason why uh, it, it needs to be done in addition to what the Secretary of State has said about our, our current equipment we can do, so uh,
Just say one more thing.
Yes.
The, the local government code and the government code and the election code gives, gives the county clerk responsibility for elections and, and everything it has to do with elections. You can go there and you can find it somewhere and write it. It's her responsibility.
So is there, is there a motion to approve the master agreement with Hart Interactive for new voting equipment? And, and to pay with uh, out of the fund balance?
A motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Melton. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right, we have three ayes. Uh, I vote aye also, and there are two nays. So the motion passes and we will proceed with signing the contract and with the new equipment. Uh, item number six, if, if y'all want to continue to stay in here for, for the rest of the agenda, you are welcome to do so. If you'd like to leave, you're also welcome to do so. Uh, interlocal, item number six, discuss and consider interlocal agreement with the Andrews Center for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, we have an agreement, for those who don't know, Andrews Center deals quite a bit with, deals with mental health uh, issues and uh, they have a facility here in Canton in which we uh, we use, where they treat people. And we use them extensively for some of the law enforcement issues whenever they apprehend a uh, a criminal, not criminal, a uh, a person suspected of mental health. Okay, the uh, the agreement that we had with them uh, last year was for twenty-two thousand. And this year it went up to uh, thirty-one, uh, it went up by ninety-four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that is uh, we have not used Andrews Center effectively in the past. We had a meeting on Friday and found out a wealth of services available to us that we can use, one of which being a eight-hundred number that officers throughout the county, not just uh, sheriff's office, but throughout the county can use when they have the mental health uh, situation that they have to deal with. And uh, a host of other services. So is there um, uh, any discussion about the contract or the uh, interlocal agreement? We have, there's uh, four other counties, uh, Wood, uh, Smith, Henderson and Raines that are involved in uh, in this contract. And they also provide uh, money to the Andrews Center. The funding that we provide, the Andrews Center accounts for less than one percent of their total funding. Okay, so it's not significant in that regard. But they do provide us a service and uh, and uh, and for full disclosure, uh, I am on the board of the Andrews Center. So uh, is there a motion to approve the, the interlocal agreement with the Andrews Center for fiscal year twenty-four?
Go move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and consider Republic Services Contract for Precinct One. And allow the county judge to sign the contract. This would be.
Yes, gentlemen, I put this one on here. We was using forty-yard dumpsters at the collection station in Precinct One Barn. And I dropped back to thirty-yard dumpsters are a little shorter, easier to get stuff over into. The price per yard is the same. We negotiate it down to where it costs me the same per yard material without a forty-yard dumpster or thirty-yard dumpster. So it's not costing anything extra, make it easier to load material into it. But because it is a change in the contract, it has to be signed by the official signer of the county who is the judge. And so I'm asking for it this time to approve him to sign.
Second. All right, motion is made by, made by Commissioner Pratt, seconded by Commissioner Melton. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is, this is how it works. So Mr., we budgeted Mr. Pratt's in his budget. He can do this. It comes back, he goes and does his negotiation. He comes back, he brings this to the court. He presents it to the court. The court has the opportunity, Reggie, you ask any questions? And then we're good. It's not that you just go do what you want to do. Comes back to this court. That's supposed to work. Thank you.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Uh, all those opposed like sign. Motion passes. Who, who made, uh, Chad, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, and Virgil, okay. All right, item number eight, discuss, consider, improve application for Edco fiscal year twenty twenty-four solid waste grant by precinct one.
Yes, gentlemen, I put this on, the uh, Edco has a grant program by which they'll purchase dumpsters for us to have a precinct cleanup day. And uh, for last year was the first time I applied for it, was able to get at least six dumpsters and people would just come and dump. And that helps keep it from going in the road ditches and it cleans the community up. And it seemed like a, a real good thing we done last year. So I'm asking the court to allow me to pursue this grant again this year. Make a motion that, but.
All right, motion has been made by Commissioner Pratt. Seconded by Commissioner, uh, Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider, approve application for Edco fiscal year twenty twenty-four solid waste grant by precinct three.
This is the same thing, before we put, before we can go out for any grant, we have to have permission from the court to do so. That's why Mr. Pratt and I put this on here. It's a three thousand dollar grant that East Texas Council of Governments gives towards our cleanup days. Um, precinct three's been doing it for six years now. It's very successful. So I'll make a motion, we uh, approve the application and also sign the resolution.
Say it.
All right, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss and consider the approval of awarding for application of recycled unused asphalt shingle back pavement for all R and B precincts, that's Roden Bridge precincts for the remaining Roden Bridge materials term bid of August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, yes, gentlemen, this was a bid process I asked y'all to go out for last month. We got our bids in. They uh, only applied for, we put it out for precincts one, two, three and four, but he only put in for precincts uh, one and three. It comes out to be, trying to get it down here. Nobody, it comes out to be thirty-eight thousand. Same, you have an exact number finally? Thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars per mile to overlay the roads with this recycled unused shingle asphalt. And so uh, make a motion that the court approves this awarding speed.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Uh, is there any further, the seconded by Virgil Melton, is there any uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss and consider renewing the interlocal contract for county nine-one-one database maintenance. The contract period will begin uh, September first, twenty twenty-three and end on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have an interlocal agreement with Edco to maintain our database. And uh, for nine-one-one addressing. And um, this is a renewal of that contract, and I believe, Tenny, do you have the amount of the contract? I think it was six, well over six thousand dollars. I don't want to scroll through all my, all this stuff to try to find it.
Oh, I was having my computer wasn't going.
If something happens when you get to.
I can scroll it, but uh, Six thousand five hundred forty-two dollars? Ninety cents for two years. So is there a motion?
So made.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna discuss.
Just so y'all know, this is when somebody gets a new address, a new establishes a new house or whatever, and they have to apply for nine-one-one addresses and it has nothing to do with ambulance service. We don't have to do with, we could hunt Henderson County, for example. They do theirs in-house. If you want an, an address over there, you call a Henderson County employee and they'll set you up. We don't, we, uh, the county years ago decided to go with East Texas Council of Governments. That's why we send y'all, if anybody wants that address, can you call us, we tell you to call them. And they'll, they know, they've got the database and keep it up to date. So that's what this is about.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider setting the twenty twenty-three Department of Motor Vehicles Optional County Fees. And uh, do you want to address it or? Okay, there's, there's fees that are charged uh, by the tax assessor collector when they do motor vehicle registration. Uh, and also we, and there's three different fees, I believe, that we, we.
Currently, we only do two.
Okay.
We do, uh, when you go register your vehicle, there's a ten dollar fee. Uh, for Roden Bridge, we, it's ten dollars. That fee is the start, the start of one whole road bridge per mileage. Uh, any precinct. And then we have a child safety fee, which is a dollar fifty. That fee is remitted to the child advocacy center. And also we have preschools that have school property over on Highway A with Roosevelt, uh, Louisville and Penn State. And that also gives you the county will get a ten percent, a ten percent of the fees for managing the money. And that fee remit.
So we have to uh, uh, submit approved by the police department, submitted to, to Department of Motor Vehicles to do that. So, uh, is there a motion to approve the optional county fees?
So my person.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Both like time. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, appointment of election judges and alternate judges for November seventh and December ninth elections. And I will let our county clerk address this. I will try to find it.
In elections, they're usually, um, we used to do it for two years, but now we're doing it for one year because the judges do change.
It's gonna take me a while to get there. No. Don't know where I'm at. I'm in the courtroom at the moment, but I'm looking for. Don't know where I'm at. I'm in the courtroom at the moment, but I'm looking for. I want to find the names. What is this right here? Okay, that is the heart agreement. So we are further down. What is this one?
That's Chad.
Oh, we're close. Apologize, folks. Could be able to identify.
There it is, right there.
There it is. Here are the appointment of the election judges and alternates. And I guess, God, I don't know if I should. Share the screen, put this up or not? Just have to watch the video, I guess. No, okay, it's public record. It's available. So. These are election judges for one year, correct? This will be through the November, uh, twenty twenty-four elections?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a good, so, uh. Okay, is there a motion to accept the election judges as, uh, submitted? All right, motion made by Commissioner Pratt, Commissioner Barton, you want the second?
I second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss, consider, approve the order of election. For the November, November seventh constitutional amendment election and the November seventh special election. Okay, Susan, you want to, uh, explain what this is?
Uh, this is actually calling, you know, the order of the election. So we do have to approve commissioners for. For any of our elections that we do. So we know we have these two back to backs. So we just put them all on one, um, item. But we do have to have the order signed.
So this is the order right here and it shows you the early voting, shows you the main, early voting location and the early voting dates and times.
Right.
And I don't, you don't have the, uh, actual polling places on here, correct?
We don't have them on there. Uh, we've got one polling location that may change. And so we are trying to get confirmation on that. Hopefully get it by Friday. And so we may come back to it if we get the change later.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the order of election for November seventh? And, uh, it's constitutional amendment election and special election.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Just want to bring out, you would think. Two, two items here that we discussed elections that come to commissioner's court. But yet commissioner court has nothing to do with buying voting, but. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, receive and file for record a district court order reappointing Sandy Hill. As county auditor for a two-year term beginning or ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So move Pearson.
All right. I was trying to get it to be a lifetime appointment, but that was not welcomed. So. Uh, all right, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those, uh, opposed like sign. Motion passes. All right, we will now go into, uh, a closed executive session. Uh, in compliance with section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code to seek advice of attorney regarding ending or. Litigation or. Protected by attorney by. Yes, I would like for you to be there. I don't know if, uh.
Tell everybody, you know, if somebody is, I've got to go to a school.
Yeah, you know, I.